I'm sorry, Jeremy?
I didn't answer CEO.
Yeah, I was going to introduce you, and you've sworn in.
CEO of Vividium Energy, been in business for thirteen years.
Right, 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 and in this project, you're the...
Whoops.
Development guy.
I always feel like stuff about the house.
Forgot your name.
That's right. And mindset?
Please come to the board. Please turn off yourself on the pages as they interfere with the recording device.
Yeah.
The special meeting of the morning adjustment for the bros, some of the... Please come to the board. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the public media app has been that it has been properly advertised in the current news by email fax or... Or, uh, yeah, email or fax given to the property administrator, posted on the bulletin board outside of the rule of law and on the rule website. Many members believe that this meeting is being held in violation of the public media app. This time, there are none. These procedures are judicial nature, proper decorum must and will be maintained. Only comments and questions relating to the application and the testimony given will be accepted. Okay, got that out, all right? Next item, roll call, please.
I'll be, I'll be handling, uh, I'll be filming, trying to film this, uh, this workman's very, very capable shoes. Uh, roll call starts, Mr. Alat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Dare?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Forrest?
Down.
Okay. Ms. Carverness?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Videmsky?
Here.
Mr. O'Clagan?
O'Clagan.
O'Clagan.
Here.
Okay, you stand by, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Razzowitz?
Close.
Yeah.
Chairman, yours.
And, and, and last but not least, Mr. O'Neill.
I'm gonna get called Mr., but I'm here.
All right, we have a board.
Uh, we got Chairman Dare. Now, I think we would, uh, Mr. Dare, you want to have a motion to, uh, declare that, uh, Mr. Forrest?
Yes, I do. I'll move that. You second that, Mr. Forrest, absolutely, this way it was excuse.
All in favor?
Aye.
All? Yes. Very good. Uh, and time for a sweep to the flag.
The nation's flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and the justice of our own.
That sounded nice. I'm sorry, that sounded really good back there. Chair, board, man. It just came out, it sounds good. Okay, we have the motions. Okay. We have two land use, uh, application before us. The first will be an active conception church. Anybody have any conflicts with this? So we're going to go to here. That will, conception church, solar panels. Counselor?
Yes, it's me, for my name's Sam Perez, I'm a parent, he's a lawyer, I have a coochie. Uh, can you definitely put the table here?
Yes.
Maybe you can get a chair for yourself.
You need to stand for the whole.
See? May want to bring up another.
Oh, position.
Get comfortable. Stand in the corner.
So, um...
Just unidim.
Sure, my last name is up, Perez, he is in void, O R A S K. And this evening, I have the pleasure of representing the applicant for Summit Solar Company LLC. The applicant initially filed where additional use approval and a minor site plan approval to permit accessory rooftop solar installation at the Immaculata High School. It's actually, uh, a system that hold, is a rooftop array, one for the person themselves, and then also the housing required. So they're, they're all parts of the same system, they're all providing power to the property owner. Um, but the arrays themselves are separated by their own. The one thing I want to emphasize is that there are no, there are no, uh, ground site disturbances proposed with this application. There are no carports, uh, with solar panels or any new construction proposed. Uh, the only improvements are the actual solar panels and the associated, uh, equipment that goes with the solar panels, which will be primarily located on the top of the, uh, existing buildings at the, at the property. So, uh, tonight, we have, or I have, uh, put aboard a representative of Summit Solar, Sean Haynes. I also have, uh, another representative of Vividium Energy who has been working with Summit Solar on this project and, uh, so another solar company contractor, uh, Jeremy, Jeremy Connors. And then, uh, we also have several, uh, several possible witnesses, representatives of, of the church and the property owner, who can address, um, you know, any general questions to the board or any concerns that you may have with aspects of the site that do, uh, you know, that do not relate to the solar panels themselves. So we are in receipt of the board engineers' June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two review letter. I can represent at the outset that, uh, both the solar applicant and the property owner can comply or will comply or satisfy all the comments and the concerns, uh, that are set forward in, in the review letter. So, uh, with that introduction, board, I'd just like to bring up, uh, Sean to provide a little initial direct testimony, um, about the solar improvement.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to review the notices provided by the applicant, and, uh, I believe they are sufficient as to form a content of the board to exercise jurisdiction on the application. Would you please stand and raise your right hand? Please stand and raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sean Haynes. H A Y N E S.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haynes. Your witness, your witness counsel.
Thank you.
Uh, Sean, could you provide the board a little bit of concise background information about Summit Solar and, uh, yourself, your position with the company?
Yeah, um, Summit Solar's been around since two thousand and ten. Um, we've been doing C I work and residential work since then. Um, currently, we're doing about twenty, twenty-five megawatts a year. Um, it's always been based in Jersey, and I'm saying based in Jersey. Um, my position at Summit Solar is not attractive field operations, so I get all the operations and anything that goes on.
So Sean, you're familiar with this particular project at Immaculata High School?
I am.
And you're familiar with, uh, the plans, the site plans that were prepared and submitted to the board for approval tonight?
I am.
And you heard my introduction to the board a few minutes ago, was everything I represented to the board accurate?
That was.
And, uh, I did give the board a brief overview of the solar improvements proposed, uh, to the installation on the roof of the high school, which Jim. But if there's anything else you had, just worry in the board as to the improvements proposed, um, feel free to, to...
Yeah. So because it's two different systems, two different rooftops, there's two different front end decks, one on each side of the building. So that's the only difference when it comes to the whole, uh, setup up there. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. Um, you know, there's definitely some questions I want to answer here for you guys tonight, but it's pretty simple.
And so since we are here for a conditional use, uh, approval, and initially it was looked at as thought that we may require a conditional use variance, uh, and that is because the verb code conditionally permits accessory solar in all, in all zones, but only where the specific conditions of the ordinance are satisfied. So Sean, are you familiar with the verb code, it's one oh two, one sixteen, T two, uh, that permits accessory solar as a conditional use?
I am.
And we could go through each individual, uh, condition, but just at the outset, does, does our application and the system as depicted in our latest plan comply with all the conditions in the ordinance? And you're aware that in previous cases, our application actually did not comply with one of the conditions, uh, specifically the height of the solar panels. Uh, it was caught out as being nine point three, or nine point one three feet, which exceeded the five foot ordinance requirement. Uh, can you confirm that the height of the panels is actually not nine point one three feet?
No, and I believe it was a misinterpretation, uh, that height of panels on the roof would come over nine point one three.
So...
Nine point one inches?
Yes.
And, so you're also familiar with the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, review letter issued by the board engineer?
I am.
Would the board prefer, and I was going to ask direct, I was going to ask the applicant or, or direct testimony addressing the comments in the review letter, or would the board prefer to have those questions come from the engineer?
You don't have to give a testimony to comply.
Okay.
I think there's a comment on the glare.
All right, there's a few that might need comment too.
Yeah, I got a couple, uh, just some of the questions that popped out to me, um, when it comes to the glare panels that are being installed or anti-excluded.
Okay.
Right.
I think the question started on page five, I had a question about the micro inverters, you're not proposing that for information purposes?
Yeah, we are, we, uh, we have a system not for micro inverters, just for service and usability. Uh, when the micro inverters go down, it's harder to source, so that's why we're there.
Okay, so the inverters propose are going to comply with the statement...
Absolutely.
Including the flatband transformers you have on the panel?
Absolutely, they will be below.
And everything else is six inches from the sides, all that combines, we just feel it's sixty. Now it's, uh, six inches above the edge of the roof line on item three. And, uh, but we want to declare, and the five was obviously the U rolls you're sizing with the system for the onsite use.
That's right.
That metering?
Yep, that's right.
I got a question, all three inverters are, um, between the accessory building, the classroom building, and the main building. Correct? They're all on that one wall. Um, what kind of protection is there for a lot of students walking by there every day? Uh, can you talk about that a little bit?
Um, well, we plan on putting a fence up, uh, and leaving all that approach requirements for clearances and stuff like that.
Okay, what would the, what would the danger be within it, or what could it?
There's not much of danger, um, direct current is very, I mean, if you touch it, yes, it's going to zap you, but it's, there's a huge difference between direct current and, uh, AC. Now, if they ever touched it, uh, how quick it hurts, then there could be a problem, but all systems are fine for you, you know, so it's considered normal.
How high will the fence be?
Uh, I believe...
This is not over, why are you here? Play, Marjorie.
No, it's, it's all in play.
Yeah.
So if you can't get it, you can't get it while they are...
You can't touch it.
They are bicycle kids.
I'm sorry, what was the height of the fence?
Six feet.
Six feet, okay.
And, uh, but we'll go back to the engineer's question, the, the system will include all the appropriate warning signage that's required by, you know, state, state code and, and... So hopefully, the high school students will take heed of the signage, the, you know, the warning signs.
That's their job.
I think I had a question about the valves. You're going to provide the calculations, the, the solar panels are being anchored to the roof of the high school. So they're going to draw the weight on them, so, you know, provide those counts, obviously, for the U C C permit.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, just provide our office the same calculations on that.
That's right, that's...
Now you mentioned service, you're going to maintain the service on this facility? Inspection?
The inspections and all that stuff, yes.
Yeah, you do the heat inspections, all that kind of stuff, from the monitor annually at least.
We actually, we can monitor them remotely.
Right, I know, sometimes they put a scan on top to take another look.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, that's part of the online process.
Yeah, do it every six months.
That's it, you're, I, I assume that will...
Do you subcontract your maintenance, just a procedural question, or is it, you have your own?
Summit has our own, we're on it.
Anybody from the board? Are you done?
Yeah, that's all I got.
This one, what, you're not going to any battery storage there?
No battery storage, it's, that's directly connected, right.
Anybody have any ques, uh, questions of Mr. Haynes?
Curiosity reverse meter.
Anybody from the, from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony, just give them to Mr. Haynes? Okay?
Yeah. I do.
If you're with the school to rate food here, and I think it's the target here, correct?
Yes.
Can you indicate some other questions?
Board, my, my only other witness, uh, would just be, uh, Monsignor Solano, just to very briefly address, uh, the other comments in the review letter that pertain to some of the existing site additions.
Monsignor, would you stand and please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give, this matter will be the truth, so hope you got it.
Hope you got it.
Would you, would you please, uh, state your names, by your last name?
Monsignor Joseph G. Solano, C P L. Aye.
Thank you, Monsignor. Councilor, your witness.
Thank you. Monsignor, thank you for, uh, for joining us this evening as a representative of the property owner of the school, the church. Are you familiar with the board engineers' two twenty eighth, twenty-two review letter of the solar application? Yes, I am. And you're aware there are a number of comments relating to dumpsters and other, a number of other, uh, site aspects, but all relate to a two thousand and fifteen planning board approval, correct?
Zoning board approval.
Zoning board approval.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sure. Um, and have you represented to the board or testified to the board that all of the comments in the review letter, it's really page seven, eight? Well, I think through, seven, seven to essentially the end of the review letter, the comments. Uh, is that the, there's intention to comply fully with all those, uh, comments as a condition of a possible approval tonight? Yes.
Well, the, the intention in two thousand and fifteen was also to have these items done, so I would like to, to, uh, suggest that we don't get a, uh, make these items, the review items on page seven, eight, and possibly nine, um, a part of a package where, um, in order to get the CEO, these items also are required. Okay.
That could be a condition of approval.
Yes. Unless the board has any specific questions, that, uh, that is really it. Um, I, I, I will represent the board, and we discussed this with, uh, the church as well, that as far as compliance with the, the additional comments related to the site, uh, the, the church was looking to post a, a bond or, uh, some sort of assurance to the board so that those improvements will be, uh, completed in accordance with the, the prior approval and, and tonight's review letter. Uh, while at the same time, the accessory solar improvements could proceed, uh, with, with permitting pending, uh, pending the posting of that bond and inclusion of those additional site improvements.
Anyone from the board have any questions on Monsignor?
I, I assume you want to get this done before school starts. Correct. That's, yeah.
Anyone from the audience have any questions on Monsignor? Anyone else?
That'll actually be it for our, our, our list of direct testimony. Of course, we have Sean's available, and Monsignor, anyone, uh, or additional questions for the board or the public?
Anyone from the public have any comments on the application?
Please come forward and identify yourself to your name and address.
One?
I'm here now.
Okay, I'm here now. Someone move to the public portion of the event.
Hold it. Second.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Board, would you please?
I can't keep you with the travel today, given this, uh, I would support our increasing rush. The common sense of application, there was a lot of, you know, working, that they, they deal with, they want to get done for school, all for it.
What, what conditions do you have?
The only condition I have, other than our standard conditions, which, which, you know, the applicant I'm sure is familiar with, and then, you know, you have to make sure everything is paid and, uh, uh, all other possible, uh, state, county, federal, uh, require, requirements are met, uh, is that, uh, the applicant shall post a, uh, post a bond to the, uh, to the terms and conditions of the bond will be in satisfaction of your...
Yeah, for the activities in the prior resolution.
Right, essentially. And the form of contact can be approved by either the engineer or by myself.
The engineers, but the engineers report.
Right. Yeah, I, I was going to say, compliance with the comments, because the comments that the board reported will be another, will be another condition of approval, will be another condition of approval. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a question. Well, for them to get an permit to do this, would they have to wait for us to ratify resolution, which takes, it's years? I know, I'm just asking a question, we only get the end, do, do they proceed based on what we're doing, or do you have to wait for the...
I, the, the, the board could, the board could consent to doing that. The applicant would be acting at its own risk if they do that. Uh, but the board could consent to doing that.
That, or, which, we could probably, I don't know, the schedule, it's had this tomorrow, less than two weeks, the best meeting.
That's whatever it is, but if you wait for a normal standard, it's going to be, it's going to be September.
I think you can turn it around a couple of weeks, I get the, great.
Someone like to move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Wait for a little bit.
Sorry. Full conditions set forth in the record. Chairman Dare?
Yes.
Roger, Javis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Carverness?
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Clagan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Alat?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Okay.
Board, thank you very much, and, and I want to, I had to say this at the beginning, but also thank you for holding the special meeting and, and cooperating, uh, you know, everything with the solar and the sooner, sooner the better. So, uh, I would be very, very appreciative of that, knowing I speak with the church, and I would appreciate the board, uh, cooperating this time, so thank you again. Uh, we'll be around.
Fine, I, I can contact you if I have any questions regarding the resolution.
Absolutely, sure, I think I can, can show the facility.
I think Mr. William Ranon made some question to you as well about, you know, what has to be done in the diocese and...
I should shut up.
I should...
All right, well, yeah.
He spoke with me a couple of times today.
Yes, so I did also speak, uh, with him as well, so we'll, we'll record it, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next application, six ten, L M.
I can throw this back a little bit. Um, since we, since we were, um, last before you, uh, we submitted a series of, um, certificates we had to introduce, um, all of which, all the purpose of which are to, actually, I should actually make appearance.
I should, should.
I, I got writing to, to Charles Leesling, uh, Marshall Binnor, uh, the applicant's Bell Avenue Holdings LLC, and the, uh, property, this, this, that, now, after it. Um, the, um, certificates are intended to demonstrate a portion of our, our case relating to our request for certificate of non-conformity, um, and demonstrating the absence of abandonment or intention to abandon. Um, so, I, I, we, um, not going to go through everything we went through last night, um, but quickly, um, we are seeking a certificate of non-conformity for this property. Uh, the, um, go ahead. But the law, generally speaking, um, requires the systems to be, there to be, to be non可以用, and that the use has not been destroyed or abandoned without intent to abandon. Uh, we will present testimony and exhibit some support for all this. Uh, so with me again is my client, um, principal of the applicant, uh, Rashan Alexander. Um, remind that he's still in the Rose?
Yes.
Yes.
In the Rose.
Remain in the Rose. Uh, okay, just quickly, you purchased the property in March twenty twenty, just to refresh the board's memory?
Yes.
Okay, and condition of the property, when we purchased it?
It was in poor condition, it was filled with antiquated machinery and other, just lots of stuff. Uh, it was, it was loaded up, it was, the building was full.
Okay, and it was contaminated as well, correct?
Yes, it was an environmental issue.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm going to ask you some of the things that you learned about the property, um, in the course of your, your pre, pre-opposition diligence. Um, uh, first, first of all, the, the company we bought from was that Town Technologies?
Yes.
Okay, um, and so you're understanding that Town Technologies had acquired that property from Town Laboratories, is that identified? That's correct, okay. Um, okay, um, just for the purposes of documenting the record, it's not really relevant to our, um, to our, our case, but there, uh, there's an exhibit, public record, exhibit A five, which you have, which is the, um, Town Laboratories acquisition, um, of the property in nineteen seventy. Um, Mr. Givens? Given that they've been distributed, do I still mark them for the purpose of this hearing?
Yes, I would ask that you do that.
Okay, okay. All right, so, and this is exhibit A.
I just want to confirm that you filed a copy of this with the board, uh, ten days or more before the hearing?
I did.
Very good.
Um, and I believe they've been distributed as well, possibly they have.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay. Um, okay. You want me to bring my beach timer, or should I just?
I believe the reporter can mark them.
Oh, okay, that's great.
There we go. Can you mark it? Or would you prefer that I mark?
I can put this on it, but if you want to keep going, you can just...
Okay, all right, got it. There we go, eight hot, okay. Um, um, and then, you're aware that in nineteen eighty, um, Town Laboratories got approval from this board, a predecessor to this board, just a building to its current size?
That's correct.
Okay, and you know that from res, a resolution that was distributed, um, from nineteen, your board resolution, um, that came from the board's files before you bought the building?
That's correct.
Okay, through a, through a record request?
Yeah, did, uh, go for...
Over a west, okay. Okay. Um, is this that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'd like to, A six, yes, make this an A six. Okay, before you, before you hand it over to him, is this also the resolution that didn't deal with the expansion, but also the recognition by the board that the light industrial use was now pre-existing non-complacency use?
Yes.
As in the resolution, for, okay. Okay, we'll be back to that later. Uh, next, I mentioned nineteen ninety five, Town conveyed the properties to Town Technologies. And I have that key as well, just for, for the record. This, so you see this also from, from the title work that you, that you obtained for the purchase of your property?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Let's make that A seven. Do you know why the property was conveyed from Town Laboratories to Town Technologies?
It was a purchase, it was two separate, it was two separate relationships, it was a on-essential debt.
Okay, and, and, and purchased?
Principal of Town Technologies, who has Dr. Dylan.
Okay, all right, and did you continue to use that building in the same way, to your knowledge, I know you worked there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll get the.
We actually, we actually worked for Town Laboratories and worked with them from, from the whole, she, uh, property.
Okay, thank you. And to your knowledge, that use was manufacturing parts for the microelectronics industry?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's get into your direct involvement with the property now that we've, we've given the board some historic background. You contracted and provided the property in March twenty nineteen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then you purchased it in March twenty twenty?
That is correct.
Okay, and we'll deal with these as, when we get to that again. You entered into use of an occupancy agreement with the company with Town Technologies that allowed them to remain the building between your purchase and their, their exit on September twenty ninth, nineteen ninety?
Two thousand twenty.
I'm sorry, two thousand twenty, right, okay, and then they, they had the property on that date?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then you prepared, sorry to prepare the building to be occupied by a tenant?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go through a timeline of events that, for the purpose of demonstrating that, once you, from the moment you contracted to purchase this property, you were working towards getting the property back into shape for a new light industrial tenant?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so, and we're getting up to the point where we got last time, but it just seemed to make sense to do it together. Shortly after you contracted to purchase the property in March twenty nineteen, you spoke with Colin Viber, the borough's director of that lab development?
That is correct.
Okay, and did your discussion include plans to tend the building for the light industrial warehouse, warehouse user?
I discussed somewhere else looking to do the property, and he listened, and he told me that I should be speaking to John Distelli, and John would be, you know, would be able to guide me or discuss it.
Okay, and did you speak to John Distelli?
I did.
That, that, okay, okay, got the same topic?
Yes.
Okay, all right, the last hearing, in response to the question, you said you did not ask about when she was zoning officer. Is that because you didn't know Mr. Distelli was a zoning officer?
No, no, I actually thought it was the building inspector.
Okay, but so, I think, I think he wears boat hats. But, but, so you did speak, right, okay, so, correct that prior statement of the last year, okay. Then in May twenty nineteen, so, this is, this is a two months after you contracted by, you entered into a broker listing agreement with the Lucha Commercial, Martinsville?
That's correct.
Okay. I distributed that to all exhibit A eight, the Lucha Commercial group existing, so is this, is this an agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and is that your?
Yeah.
You signed it?
Yes, that's my thing.
Okay, okay, and I believe it says that you, that the purpose is to, uh, just to lease it? Right, right. And did you discuss with them what they were, wanted to try and lease the building for?
Yeah, it was for a light industrial type tenant.
Okay. Okay, all right, that's, that's A eight, okay. Next, I understand you commissioned a preliminary assessment, phase one, from PLS Environmental, open in Alpha, New Jersey?
Correct.
Okay, and you received that in July of twenty nineteen?
Correct.
Okay, all right, is this the cover page in the paper contents of that document?
Yes.
Okay, this is, this.
Correct.
Okay, and you paid for it. Okay, all right. I'd like to mark that as A nine. So now we're in July of twenty nineteen. Okay, after you received that, I understand you worked with PLS to develop the scope of your remediation that was required, and then prior to closing, in February twenty twenty, prior to closing, you entered into an administrative consent order with NJDEP?
That is correct.
Okay.
We can't get all start page, and then we.
Okay, is this, is this, is this the correspondence from, from the NJDEP to get out your administrative consent order?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That is A ten. What, what's it mean to enter into this administrative consent order with respect to your responsibilities?
The property was non-compliant at the time of the DP, so this puts back into compliance and it gives us a strip of parameters of what we have to do to keep it compliant. I mean, though we had to do certain cleanup at a certain time frame, we posted, posted, we posted enough cash in escrow with the DP to look back at these, with this cleanup.
Okay, and you had to do that in order to close, they wouldn't allow you to close unless you had this in place?
Correct.
Okay. Did they ever have to draw on your funds that you posted, or did you fund the entire remediation on your own?
We funded and then we drew our funds back.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying, you fully performed?
And we weren't required to. Yes, we, we didn't violate.
Okay. Okay, then you closed in March twenty one?
Correct.
Okay, and is this the deed that you received from Town Technologies?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then, as you said, simultaneously entered into use of an occupancy agreement with Town?
That permitted them to occupy the property.
That's correct. Is this that, you have a secret agreement with the company and Town, Town Technologies?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that is A twelve. Okay. April twenty twenty, there is a correspondence from the NJDEP indicating that, that you had, they had received a notice that you had obtained a licensed site renovation professional, professional go oversee the site renovation.
Correct.
Is this, is that letter?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, you are consistently moving towards, from, from contract to acquisition to remediation?
Correct.
Okay, all right, this is, okay. All right. I, I just think it'd be helpful for the board to make a little more insight into what status of the building was, what you had to do in order to get it to a point when that could be occupied by a new user? Maybe you shed a little light on that?
So, the building wasn't occupiable?
It was not, and, and will, will.
So, the former tenant was, they operated, or either they were operating or wasn't occupied. Well, obviously, so, the, the building was operated by the same person, Ben and the mayor, and it was just, it was a lot of clutter. You know, it was kind of, like, you know, it was just full of, it was just like stuff, you know? There was no programming place to throw out all equipment, it didn't work anymore, it was inoperable, and it was just loaded with stuff.
You say stuff, what exactly?
Personal property, machinery, file cabinets, just, um, it was just, it was just so many, just so much, I mean, just debris, so, it was, it was things all over the place.
That doesn't make it unuseful, that doesn't, that's how it's using, it's just different things, you pull a junk, you junk those like a building stays after day.
Correct. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we tried to say it.
Wow, that's, that was.
You had to make it, it was not immediately occupied by a new tenant, couldn't show the building.
I need that one to steward there for a couple of days.
Yes. Maybe a little more.
So, there, there was just so much clutter that you couldn't show, you couldn't, it was just, it was just not a building you could show to somebody, it was just so full of stuff, it was loaded up.
Did it have any, like, electric?
I had, I had just a, um, he, I had, there's some space, I don't know if it worked now.
But it was functional?
It was funk, it was a non-functioning functioning building.
Yeah, okay.
For their vehicles or things like that part there, or no? No. It was a massive old machinery that probably had to be used in that case.
They, they have photos, which is actually.
We saw it.
Okay, okay, of course, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, it was, it was just not, you know, it wasn't in a condition that we would be able to rent it, do nothing else.
Yeah, these photos, I would imagine, imagine, show after you've done some cleanup? I mean, this, this is, there's a lot of junk in here, I'm trying to find out. I mean, was this after, I, I'm getting a picture that you couldn't walk in there without a crawl bar?
No, no. I guess you look at the last picture, you have these big machines that just, that's, that's a good chunk of the building, just like that.
I, I, I would object that, because you have such little spines. That's.
Just the jack.
Or, abandonment has these spines. Great.
They were out of business?
They. Let's continue.
Was any, this was being transacted in that building?
Yes, yes, we will, we will keep going.
Okay.
Okay. All right, can you provide, provide some more information about then what you had to do in, in the, in the building?
So, we're the contractor, going there, we, many, many downstairs, then started moving the old equipment and the old reed and the, the whole stuff, so we basically did a modest, modest cleanup, we must.
Okay. And what, you needed to vacate the building for other reasons also?
So, in addition to all, it was also because of an environmental issue, we had to tear up the floor in certain areas, we had to cut the floor, block section, then remove soils. So, we saw cut a lot of the, some of the concrete floors, and when the machine, the skid steer, and dug up, dug up some of the soils.
Okay, and these are, these are the contaminated soils they need to, they need to remove?
The part of cleanup plan, where the soils.
Per your agreement with the DP?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and then, put in that vapor mitigation system? Okay, and you replaced the, the, removed soil, the clean soil?
Yeah, so when we dug it up, we put, we, you know, moved it upside, you know, transported, you know, properly, and where they know it was, disposed, you know, you know, where they disposed, where the soil.
Okay. Go back one second, saw cut the floors, taking things out, do you guys get, do you see permits for that? That was it? Construction office?
I, I don't think so.
About the vapor mitigation system, do you see permits for that?
Probably, we got, we see.
Good.
You know something, I don't know about that format.
Want your remediation, did you have a contractor?
Yes, sir.
Would your contractor have gotten those?
He was supposed to own it, or he did?
Okay. Okay. So, after you, so, so this work occurred during the first half of twenty twenty one, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and it's been over here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, what, after, so in, in November twenty twenty one, your, your biometrical firm submitted, will be the investigation report to the DA, and the, the knowledgeable agency, and by letter, November seventeen twenty one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so this is, uh. Okay, and with respect to the groundwater remediation, you completed the active portion of that?
Correct.
Okay, and you're, you're monitoring for the requirements?
We're monitoring.
Okay.
I don't know if you completed it active, I don't know if they were, had it active.
Okay, I understood that there was, there was groundwater injection, and?
You, you may do it, I, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna make you say something, but.
And I don't want you testifying, you.
Yeah, okay.
Doc, Doc, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna object to that.
Okay, all right, I, I, I won't testify. In any case, you're, you're in compliance with your DP?
Right, we're in compliance, I know we're doing quarterly monitoring at this point.
Okay. Okay, so getting back to, so over remediation, I know you needed to do these test statements, is that correct?
Correct, we removed a lot of the tests from the study. It was done. And, um, those done.
Correct. Okay, and, and then you, as you said, you had to remove the machinery and the debris and the garbage?
Correct.
Okay. And these photos, you know, you took the photos?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm contacted, you're contacted, okay, so.
Pat's family?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you were there, you can, you can, can you confirm that these represented the condition of the building when that time of the, I think?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Are you supposed to take it during your remediation, or before, or after?
Probably do it before and after.
Before and after? I wouldn't know the difference.
For this one, before, well, she's really beautiful, I don't think that. The third photo, these are all like in the middle before, there's no, I don't see any after.
There's no saw cut, there's no, nothing.
Right.
So, these are all before.
These are before, some in the middle, like the third one, the fourth one is kind of in the middle, you see some.
Right, we're kind of in the middle, I mean, I, I'm just trying, not trying to be persnickety, but.
I can see this on the floor.
Can I just ask a question, one of the relevant photographs, we all recognize what's going on here.
I, I can keep going, this was purely to, that purpose of demonstrating that this building is not something you could show to a tenant, and something anybody argues about, that's how it happens.
Well, that was.
Well, you're making a foundation for a hard time, and then, you know, you're, you're, you know, you should, you know, you should pay the board with, as you did at the beginning of your testimony, at the beginning of your case, you know, to an element of proof You know, to an element of proof and a testing to obtain a certificate of non-conforming use. So, I, I can't do that for you, you know?
No, 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 and this is, this is, this is part of it, this is just one step in the demonstration that there was not a clause in the efforts of, of. The purchaser, um, and his, 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 his call was certainly not to abandon the use, but to reposition it so that it could be occupied. And this is purely for you to demonstrate that.
And that, and that, you know, that's an element that he has to show.
Okay.
So, I mean, then that's up to the board to determine if they, if he has shown it or not, but what he's doing is not unusual in such, in, in an, in an application like this.
True, yeah, true, but we said we brought it down.
Okay, let's, let's keep going, let's keep going, I'm with you. Um, okay, that is, um, that is. Okay. Okay, um, in the course of, in, in order to, um. Okay, let me just ask you, I'm, I'm showing you two sets of invoices here, um, do you recognize these?
Yes.
Okay, and what, what was, what services were these companies are retained for?
Were removed, debris.
Okay, so the, the degree you set was removed, um, these are companies that helped you do that.
Correct.
Okay, um, all right, so we're offering this as, in support of his, that's the, that's the degree. Okay, um, and that's, and that's A sixteen, okay, all right, getting back to the timeline. You also retained Stonefield Engineering and Teneto Architects at about the same time as the, as the, at the same time you retained the L S R P?
Correct.
Okay, and what was the purpose of retaining those two professionals?
Um, we hired Teneto, really designing, you know, the building, what the, what the building should have been.
Uh huh.
And we hired, and Stonefield was their civil engineering, just to do the same thing. You know, we used the architect of the building as a civil support ground.
Okay, and, and to, to, to get the building to, for what?
Rent it to rent, and once the, once the current tenant.
What kind of tenant?
Building for a line industrial.
Okay, okay, thank you, and they, and you directed that, uh, those two companies, according to me, that's, that's what they were designing for?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so then, um, I understand that, or, how did Dulucha do in identifying tenants since you obtained it in May nineteen? May twenty nineteen?
Dulucha was not successful in finding potential tenants.
Okay, so what did you do?
We hired Simmel.
Okay, and when was that?
We hired Simmel in, um.
Yeah, was it August twenty twenty?
Yeah, August of two thousand.
Okay, all right, is this the, uh, A seven being?
Yes.
Um, and you directed, um, Mr. Simmel to lease the building for what purpose?
For industrial type tenant.
Okay, all right, um, let's mark that A seventeen. Okay, um, did they start looking for a tenant?
They did.
Okay, and is this the, um, flyer they issued to, looking up the tenant?
Yes.
Okay, um, that's what you saw before was issued as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, let's mark that A eighteen.
This is your A eighteen?
That's A eighteen, yeah.
Sure, you said for the, okay.
That's A eighteen, okay, okay, um. What, how did Simmel do, what was, what did they do in terms of identifying tenant?
Simmel, February, Simmel again, about February of twenty-one, we got a tenant for all metals. Um, they expressed interest in leasing the site, we actually signed the lease with them.
Okay, and what kind of work did they do?
They dealt with welded air spaces and bars, um, this, the glass industry, they were like those. Those metal pieces that go between the spaces, between two sheets of glass.
Is it, would you describe it as by industrial?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, all right, and, um, then, given that, that they were coming, uh, seeing this, like, it's like, please with them. Um, is it, you, you applied for zoning permit?
I did.
Okay. And you received zoning permit?
I did.
Okay, is this his own permit that you received? Okay, um, all right, let's mark that, um, A nineteen, and that was February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Okay, um, you worked on a lease with all metals then, and in May twenty twenty-one, you signed a lease with them?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is this the cover page in the, in this individual lease, identified the use?
Correct.
And that was the use T disc, but.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Did you prepare this lease, counsel, or?
I did not.
Okay.
I got a copy from, from.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um. Okay, then, what happened in August of twenty twenty-one?
Um, we, at that point, John Sully, um, turned it out, have to go before the board. And it was, it took so long for us to get here that this tenant needs space, and they ended up canceling the lease. And looking for, and, you know, they, they actually, they canceled the lease.
Well, I, I thought you said that you were issued a, a zoning permit, and then he withdrew the zoning permit, check what happened?
I was, yes, essentially what happened, though, um, there was another step, that, that originally he kind of wanted thirty thousand square feet. Then they came back and said they wanted forty, and when I went back then with an extra, you know, this extra thing, he goes, you know, I don't think that's the same thing anymore. It's not the same reason.
Yeah, you come inside into this, and I don't understand how you issued a zoning permit, then you go back for change. The use hasn't changed.
Correct.
From the, from the issued zoning permit, the second application, you're adding to the amount of space they want to use, but the use has not changed, correct?
Use the rest of the stuff.
All right, so now he, he issued a zoning certificate, and then he withdrew it because of the change, because of the amendment.
And I talked to, uh, John about this, uh, last week, and he was, I think, what he's told me is that, is his understanding that. Soft tooth was the manufacturing, the warehouse was the L, and testimony, had a testimony to be presented for doing the similar thing. As town technology, therefore he issued his own permit. And then, what the applicant is saying, he came back to use the whole space, including the warehouse portion. Uh, being the L, to my understanding, it was structured in nineteen eighty, it's a new portion. And that was the manufacturing, which was the old portion, subsequent to coming back for the whole space. The zoning officer said, that's not, um, it's obviously a bigger use, more expansive, so he withdrew the zoning permit. My understanding, which I think is very similar with the L.
Yeah, so they were, you, gonna use thirty thousand square feet, and then they wanted to get an extra ten thousand. And you were gonna expand it, add into the warehouse for the actual operation?
John told me last week that he was told the use was technical, the town technology, the spaces, so I don't know the square footage. I just know that the applicant came back to use the whole facility, and that's when John said, that's not the same use.
When that issue was for, um, the warehouse, it wasn't, I think, it wasn't solely the manufacturing.
Right.
So, you tell a line of the dog, if that, 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 that was a manufacturer, so they would have never had a warehouse except for supplying and manufacturing. Which was part of that operation. And I think that's what we, yet, that we would do.
Well, it, it's. John will say, not here, so, but what he says is technical use, very, but then if you look at the lease, it says warehouse, so. There's some disconnect, but. Right. Well, that's, that's how we got here, that's why, that's how, essentially how we got here is, uh. And then, and then the other step that we did, the applicant has said is, then the, an application was made for a site plan with the use. But we got into issues about whether it's expansion of a non-conforming use or use fairing, so we all thought it'd be prudent to break up the site plan from the use. And that's why the certificate of non-conformity is in front of you, uh, because we had a debate, or we needed a closure on this issue.
Yeah.
Uh, there was an issue on this about what, whether it's certificate of non-conforming use. That, that was the issue, whether he needs an expansion, use fairings, or not.
It all depends on.
Right, so the application was front of the board, it was scheduled to be, you know, after January, February, I do general, so I think it was scheduled for that, it was genuine. And I did a report on it, and we had some noticing issues, I think it was a notice issue, or.
No, we didn't notice half of it, because they gave us a list, but that was the reason, yeah, it was, it was, it was your conclusions about what.
Right.
Before we needed, and we called it through, we got to come in for certificate of non-conformity.
Right.
Right, there were a number of issues as to, you know, what, what, what rules were taken, or what could be taken. Uh, and, you know, what was the nature of the uses, we discussed, things like this.
Okay. I might, might be jumping ahead, but, uh, so, the deal with, uh, the metal fabricating company was gone.
Right, let me just put that into, that, okay, so, yes, this is, this is the termination law, are you receiving?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Uh, may, may I, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The, the new use that you're proposing now is, uh, one of the words we use here, fulfillment facility?
So.
Warehouse fulfillment facility, is, I don't know what a fulfillment facility is, hard enough to say. And is there any manufacturing to be done?
So, let, if we could, let's finish, let's finish with the.
All right, so we'll get there.
Okay, um, okay, so that was, that was A seventeen, okay.
I just, I just want to confirm that Mr. Kenon's letter, uh, for Quincy Holmbeck, uh, was, was in fact the cancellation of that, uh, of, of that lease?
Yes, all right, okay, all right. The, here's, okay, so then, immediately after Mr. Simmel, the, the, you listed the property, real estate, using that same, the same as A eighteen, that's correct, okay. Okay, uh, in November twenty twenty-one, um, Mr. Simmel identified a potential tenant?
Correct.
Okay, and who, who was that?
Um, Renex, Renex New York.
Okay, and then, um, and then in December, um, is that when we first applied to this board, kind of, with Renex identified as a post tenant?
Yes.
Okay, um, when did you sign a lease with, with Renex?
Um, he signed up, he's in November.
Says here, January.
January. Okay, um, okay, all right, is this, is, is this the cover page in the use statement, the signature date of that lease?
Yes.
Okay.
It's dated January eighteen.
Okay, and, um, this use, um, was that a warehouse distribution?
That is, they, they bring in boxes, they break down the boxes, individual, I, you know, in fact, individually, they, they, they bring in more appliance.
Okay, all right, um, and then in March, uh, you directed me to file an application for something about the warranty for this board, that, and here we are. Um, I, I think their actions speak, at least to me, loud and clear about.
Your planning, your plan to continue the search.
But, um, with, action side, was that your intention?
For when you bought the building?
When you had to buy the building?
Yes, that was always our intention.
Okay, um, can you also confirm, just for the purposes of checking the box on the proofs, that this building is standing, and has not been severely damaged or destroyed?
Yes, has not been.
It's there.
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay, um, that concludes his testimony with respect to the non-abandonment. I also have another witness, uh, the prior owner of the building, uh, to provide additional testimony with respect to the continuation of the use.
What do you think of the prior owner? Go ahead, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask if anybody on the board has any questions of Mr. Alexander.
Yeah, okay, I have a question, so there's, there's basically no manufacturing, there's nothing being made, they're, they're bringing in bulk items, trucking in bulk items. Uh, separating them, and then, um, packaging them again, and then sending them to wherever they go, correct?
If I want to end your, I, I mean, I know you're eager to get to that, but I want to finish the case of whether or not this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. That was not abandoned, and it was not, and, and was, uh, not destroyed. And I think that, that is a discreet, um, test that's set forth by courts as to how to demonstrate for certificate of not, not conforming. And then, and then, how the building is to be used is a second inquiry where we have, where, to go right along with Mr. Gold's memo. Substantial similarity has to be demonstrated, non-expansion, because there's no expansion of the use has to be demonstrated. But I think, I think you finish one, and then you do the next one.
Those, those are the tests that forefired Supreme Court, so yes, you know, you know, that's, that's what you've, that's what you've got set up.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm, so I'm trying to keep them, trying to keep them, you know, part, otherwise, I'm afraid it just gets, and, and I, and I think that is the standard. So, um, so, yeah, there's no more questions, I will continue the testimony, um, regarding the continuation, in support of the, our argument that. Continuation of the, the building, continuation of the use, continue for that interruption.
So I, I do have a question, when, what was the date that you bought the building?
March twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Um.
That's it. Bought the building, March of twenty twenty?
Right.
And Town Labs was a, a tenant of yours at that time?
Correct.
And they leased the entire forty thousand square feet and paid you on the forty thousand square feet?
That's correct. March fourth, by the way.
March fourth, okay, and then, when did Town Labs leave?
September twenty-nine, two thousand twenty.
September twenty twenty?
Yes.
So they stayed there for six months?
Correct.
Paid you through there, the photographs that we see here. That were between October and December, those photographs were all when they left?
That is correct.
All right, so that's how they left it, you went in, and this is what you found?
Correct, well, that was our, that, that seller didn't have to move, but we, we took on that responsibility.
They just gave back the keys, and that's where they were left over there.
Okay, thank you.
Who else would go ahead and question, Mr. Alexander?
One question, um, fire marshal, uh, report that fire doors being removed, water systems being removed, fire lamps being removed, did that, did that happen?
Yes.
Do you get permits for that?
Um, when we had a, when we, when we had a, when the skid steer, that's what we, it was a one, it was a fire door between the old building and new building. That we had in the margin, to bring in the machine.
Permits?
I don't need a permit.
On the permit room, fire protection equipment. I need the approval of the fire marshal, the fire superintendent.
I don't think we're disputing whether or not that, but we all know that's not why we're here.
I know, I'm trying, but it's also, it's kind of understand that doing things appropriately or not appropriately.
I, I reject it, drawing.
Do you have a stop worker placed on your building, stop worker, U C C department?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
And who else would you work? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this testimony? Please state your name, come, come forward.
Please identify yourself, give your address, and ask your question.
Ropay at forty-three North Midoff. Um, when I looked out my living room window, I witnessed what they were throwing out, I don't know what it was. But I am very concerned when I hear about the specimens. I don't know what it was, but I am very concerned when I hear about asbestos being removed. Permits, nothing sought. And that, that's really a red flag to me.
What's the, what's the question, sir?
Mr. Chair.
Was, was, was there appropriate, who's, who's watching when asbestos is removed? Who's, who does that?
Can I explain to the audience?
Yeah, I did. I asked these questions, questions only.
Limited to the testimony that you've heard from this witness.
Basically, you had to question anything you might have spoken of until the time.
I'm concerned about asbestos removal.
You had your chance to do that, but not right now.
Okay.
All right. We'll have a, a time for an end to say whatever you want. Almost anything.
Mr. Lee, one, I just want to mention, you know, the board is certainly within its rights to ask back questions in terms of the questions that were just asked by Mr. Allen. I, I, I don't understand your objection.
No, I don't. I don't. I think that that question is different from, from then saying, well, I can then use this to, to.
A question is the fact. I think a question is the fact. I, I, I think you're, I, I think you're, you know, what do you have to hide?
No, I guess I would say that regardless of, of whatever permits were or not filed, I'm not competing because I don't, I don't know.
These are not opinion questions.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a factor in determining whether or not a certificate of non-conformity should be issued.
Notwithstanding, the board has the opportunity and the right to educate itself as fully as possible as to the background facts.
No objection.
As to the property and the, and the application.
Absolutely. That's why we're providing all this information.
Okay. I don't want to split hairs on issues like that. Anyone else in the audience have any questions on Mr. Alexander's testimony?
Okay. All right.
I'd like to call, um, Dr. Erwin Dela. Would you please stand and raise your right hand? You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this manner, with the truth, solemnly God. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Dr. John Dillon. Last name. D J P O L C.
You're affiliated with, or were affiliated with?
I am a senior consultant.
You're a senior consultant. All right. Well, would you, Mr. Lee, one, you qualified your witness.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's actually my first question. Um, you, you were the president of, of Town Technologies. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and it was Town Technologies that sold the property to the applicant in twenty twenty. Okay. All right. Um, I have you up here for, for one purpose and one purpose only, to establish continuity of the line industrial use of the building, um, from nineteen eighty, when the Board of Adjustment determined that this was a pre-existing non-conforming use, until the day you left the building, at which point Mr. 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 Alexander's testimony picked up. So when did you start, first start working in this building?
Nineteen seventy two.
Okay. Um, was the building being used at that time to manufacture parts for microelectronics industry?
No, I was only just on the project, developing a project.
You were, you were developing a project at that time?
I started on March sixth, right that computer's own object, that's the weapon, only that, bidding on that project.
Okay. What, what was the project?
It's, it was coating on aluminum side on glass. It's going to be used in the semiconductor industry. We're gonna place a muncher in the ground.
And is that what the building then became used for?
Yes, and also some other things.
Okay.
Like, say, March sixth, nineteen seventy-two or nineteen ninety-two?
Seventeen, March, March sixth, nineteen seventy.
They did, I, I just wanted to make sure. My apologies.
Okay. Um, okay. So then your, your project, your, your research might develop into this, these processes?
Yes. I, I developed that one basically for my technique, aluminum coating on glass. And it's used in the semiconductor industry for about forty, forty-five years now.
What type of coating on glass did you say?
It was a coating on glass, very thin coating, third of the my own tip. And it used to make a pot master that.
Okay.
Then to put a set piece on that.
Understood. Understood. Okay. Um, okay. Um, and you continued to work at this building until September twenty ninth, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay. And for that time period, was this, was this use consistently, um, being carried out in the building?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you have personal knowledge of this?
Yes.
Were there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, would you have known if this use had been interrupted?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, I don't have any more questions. Dr. Dela.
Anybody from the board have any questions, Dr. Dela?
How many employees did you have during the time that you were there from March twenty twenty to September twenty twenty?
Maximum thirty, and last when I left, it was ten.
Twenty? Thirty.
Thirty.
And, and you, during that time of March twenty twenty through September twenty twenty, you leased the entire property, forty thousand square feet, and you used all forty thousand square feet?
From what date? From, uh, from the closing of the?
Yes, from the closing.
Yes, I, I, I had a contract with them that I would use the property for seven months. And one portion warehouse, I have a payment there, not for the whole building. It was part of the contract that I would stay in the building seven months after.
So did you, did you occupy the whole building?
Yes, for the whole, yes.
Okay. Thank you. What was the warehouse used for?
The storage, shipping boxes, some old equipment, lot of junk.
Related to the, if I heard.
Boxes were used and metal was used and some of other stuff were never used over there. They were sitting over there.
It wasn't a public warehouse. It wasn't anybody else?
No, no, no.
And what was the hours of operation for your business?
Eight to four thirty.
Eight to four thirty? And then how many vehicles, how many truck deliveries did you have during the week, Monday through Friday?
I had two trucks coming every day, UPS and FedEx.
Two trucks and FedEx and UPS?
UPS. And other material, I would say, I had each one truck.
You have track trailers coming in here, lotion boxes?
Truck, truck trailer, the bigger one maybe once a month.
I just, while I appreciate, um, what Mr. Dillon said, this is not information that's relevant to the certificate of non-conformity. This was, this we developed. I don't know how it is. We're, we're, we're talking about, talking about whether or not it's standard.
We're talking about the use.
I'm sorry. I was referring to my, my engineer's plan.
That's okay.
What's the problem?
I, I will say it's a problem. I'm just, again, I'm trying, I'm trying in order to keep things clear. Um, I don't believe that questions about, about traffic and employees is relevant to whether or not, whether or not this, this property is entitled to a certificate of non-conformity.
What has it to do with the nature of the use, doesn't it, Counselor? I mean, you have moving vehicles and activity going on in the site. I, 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 you know, I, I think you're, I mean, I'm familiar with the law on.
Very much so.
quote abandonment or non-abandonment of non-conforming uses. I mean, the, the courts have been very sensitive in terms of, uh, taking everything into account. So I'm not gonna instruct my board not to ask you, my board, this board, not to ask you, not to, you know, not to ask you what they believe to be fact questions. Uh, I, I, I was about to ask a fact question.
Good.
What kind of, what kind of machines did you have? I mean, were these tool and die machines?
No, no. I have chemical engines, rating tanks.
Titanium, okay.
Rating tanks, different station, portable uses, different station, developing station, stripping station.
Circuit board stuff.
All right. So you're, at the, at the height of your business, you had about thirty employees.
Yes, I do.
And you're saying that you only had UPS and another truck come in?
Correct.
Once, once a week?
No, no, no. Every, every day two or three.
Okay. Well, I, you're producing something. You're, you're manufacturing something.
These are very smart parts. You can pack the whole thing in one box.
So you didn't have any kind of trucking other than UPS or FedEx coming in and out of there? Your product that you produced had to go somewhere. How did it get there?
Well, UPS and FedEx.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's your raw materials.
Round field would come maybe, I would say, at that age, once a week, ask, come there and move these.
Forty-foot truck?
Forty-foot truck will come maybe once a year, like twice a year. Pick up the waste chemical and deliver the waste chemical. The other parts were very small, metal was small, they're all hundred pound. You don't need a big truck for that.
So you didn't have ocean containers or anything? Have to sit in the yard, nobody's back, and end up in the back? You're making things. You're making things. You're manufacturing.
Yeah, we were making.
Dr. Dela, since you're developing the seventies, that's what you manufactured through your two thousand, twenty twenty?
What?
The same product you were manufacturing all, all thirty, forty years?
That was one of them, which I was in nineteen seventy-two. We continued to make that one, and I, and there were others. Chemicals thing was done, like the rating was done.
So when the Dancy brothers retired, what year did they retire?
They retired in ninety-two.
Ninety-three. Did the business change after they retired? Did you remain the same company?
No, we continued the same.
When you shut down the operations, would you just stop? You can sell the business to anybody else?
I sold the business to a company in California, take up a business, and he tried to carry us.
So just if I may go back to you, one question. You said that your operation was eight to four thirty, and that was Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Were you to work any Saturdays or any Sundays?
No, we had it. At, at the end, we did work Saturday and Sunday as well. In the last six months, I had a lot of work, so I wanted to get out before I go.
Just the last six months.
The last six months. And I sold the building, last six months, we worked Saturday and Sunday as well, and longer hours. I wanted to complete everything that I committed, and I did every one of them. And I'm very proud of it.
Congratulations.
Anyone else on the board have any questions, Dr. Dela?
Just one.
Business was very, very, those ones were, they done from the top for the last forty or fifty years. I still got to get the cost from all some of them, they can't afford it. But I think they, they can't figure out the business from me and get it for them, they would not be able to make it. These were decisions that inspired, but, um.
Anyone from the audience have any questions of the testimony Dr. Dillon just gave?
Again, please identify yourself, give your address, uh, and ask your question. The question is responsive to the testimony that you've just heard from this witness.
Is there anyone?
Uh, David Lang, eighteen, Camden Place in Summerlin, New Jersey. Doctor, I'm just curious, what was the final date of manufacture, the last, last day you actually produced product before leaving?
That was first week of September, we finished manufacturing, and the last three weeks we spent on cleaning, getting it up again. My commitment to them was that I would definitely move out again to, from the building, if they want to open. Or dispose of them all, illegally dispose of them all, everything that we had.
When year was that?
Five.
One year.
And not, uh, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Anyone else have any questions of Dr. Dillon?
Yes, sir.
Power, uh, please, one oak, please, door seat. How do you know Dr. Dillon? Uh, Dr. Dillon, my question is, were there ever any tractor trailers coming into, into your property here during, during that?
Yes. Once a month they were coming, big load of chemicals, uh, missing out, and they were wasted. And they all, they never came.
How frequent?
Not originally, maybe two or three times a year. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Heather McNaul Lang, eighteen, Camden Place. Dr. Dillon, you said that the maximum number of employees you had was thirty. What would you say the average number of employees were?
I guess what goes twenty last, uh, three, four years were pretty bad. But I always said more than twenty.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Dillon, thank you. Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other witnesses. Um, I, I do have some, some conclusion. Okay. In support of the, in support of the non-conformity. It's in A six.
So you have the word, the word, uh, decision?
No, I don't.
So like the, the word for, uh, the whole of my proposition?
But I, I, I.
The, the comments too, of his comments, but I say, I did. Are you wanna, do you wanna sum your case?
Yeah, I want, I want to, I want to summarize what's happening here, um, in support of what's been done.
I think how it goes first, and the public will go first.
I would, I don't want to tell the applicant how to present his case, but, uh, it would seem to me that the comments from the interested public might be better to be offered now. Yeah, and as you can sum.
That's fine. I didn't know that, I didn't know that, given the nature of this application, not, not as an application for development, but as a non-conforming, that there would be, um, public input. But if that's how, if that, if you are, then I agree with you.
I believe that's the case. I mean, I, I'll, I'll tell you, Counselor, the cases of, of this type that I have handled, you know, perhaps other practitioners do otherwise, but I, you know, we, you know, comments are taken from the, from the members in here, it's Republican, and there's a Senate. I get it. I respect.
I just didn't know it was coming.
So I would say yes.
Then absolutely. Then absolutely. I guess all I would.
Mr. Mr. Alexander, I've had a question, maybe it's inappropriate, but we've certainly discussed what this building needs to be. Nobody's talked about what is good and how we're gonna determine the continual use or, or anything. We don't know what to do there. And I have to ask you a question.
No, frankly, we really haven't heard that, but I mean, in order, but to obtain a certificate of non-conforming use, they also have to present, you have to present evidence, and I believe that was your intention, present, present evidence that what would be going on would be for all intents and purposes identical or, or comparable, you know, that you were continuing to use.
Well, I guess.
And we can argue, we can argue over what the cases say, but, uh, I, I, I think that's, you know, I think that is part of your, part of your case in chief. But let's, let's be, let's, you know, if, if the board determines that, you, I mean, we've discussed this, discussed this last time. If the board determines that, you know, you're not entitled to the certificate, what that means is you'll be making an application for, uh, you know, you're, I would say, you'd be making an application for a D one. If the board is going to provide a certificate of non-conforming use, I believe at that point, the application shifts, uh, the differences of opinion. But I believe it shifts to a D two because, though, though, though the, again, the quantum of what you're doing with the use, you just laid out a case, you just laid out a case in which you were, you were doing manufacturing of fine scale material, glass, whatever, you know, though not a tool and die shop or something like that, you had that. And you were proposing to have a finished product, you know, storage of finished products, uh, facility. Um, you know, there may be a question as to the intensity of that use versus the intensity of the previous use, which, you know, frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a fact question. It may be less intense. It may be, uh, and, and that's, that's something the board will have to determine. I'm not trying to confuse the board or the interested public, but, all right, I'm sorry.
Now, I mean, as I. I think what the applicant is trying to do is to say how. I think what the applicant is trying to do is to say how technology is asking for certificates, for talent technology, not for the proposed. With respect to the, the building today, is entitled to certificate of non-conform use. Was it a pre-existing non-conform use? Has, has the building been destroyed, has the use been abandoned? That's the testimony personally. When, at, when there is another tenant and we know exactly what that tenant's going to do, submit application. Mister, well, I guess gonna be the zoning officer would say, well, they're gonna have to come in and demonstrate everything in your control now. Is it substantially similar, is this an expansion? You know, we gotta hear about that. But, but the certificate of non-conform use does not, under the law, take into account the next use. It can be requested at any time, it's not, there doesn't have, we wouldn't have to even be leasing the building now, probably lease the building in order to come in and apply for a certificate of non-conform use. You just have to make those groups, so I'm trying to break it down, get that, get that issue closed, and then Lord knows, you come in here with something, a daycare center, I'm with you.
So why are we talking about the renics lease? To show.
Why, hold on.
To show.
Hold on.
And why are we talking about the proposed use of this facility?
Well, we're not talking about the proposed use, all we're talking about is what that need, the purpose of all that documentation is to show you that this applicant had no intention of abandoning the prior use. They were nose to the grindstone from the day they signed the contract until today to try to keep this, uh, light industrial use present in this building. That's the purpose.
So that's, that's, because we're confused, we think that there's a part B to this that you're coming in with, but you're ready to summarize your testimony just before.
For, for this, yes, because our application before you is for a certificate of non-conform use. Not for a tenant, not for expansion, not for de-variants, that, to my mind, will have come into course.
When, depending on what the board decides. Depending on what the board decides based upon the evidence before.
Uh, hold on, if you're proposing to give back this building used for, the user no longer exists.
It, it, but it was not abandoned under the law. That is, that building is vacant, and this, and that does not mean that the use has been abandoned. That's, that's clear in the case law. Tenants come and go. Tenants come and go, tenants go out of the business, that doesn't mean that, that from that moment, that the, the property owner has lost their life.
And so you're asking for a non-conform use from circuit board metal etching?
For, well, what I, what I'm asking for is what the board in nineteen eighty found this building to be, pre-existing non-conform use, which was light industrial.
Oh, I disagree with that.
That was specific to that, to that business.
That's a category draw, that's not a use.
Yeah, that use runs with the, that, that specific use runs with the land. I, I, I don't think you can, I don't think you can warp it into something else.
That, well.
The use is specific for a use, not a category.
Yeah.
So the testimony, it's metal etching, so if you're asking the board for certificate of non-conform, for metal etching.
I'm totally clear on this. Yeah, but I, I don't think that the use, well, I don't think that the, the use has to be a, a success.
The most attractive.
But that's what you're asking for, metal etching use, that's what you're asking certificate to be.
I'm asking, I'm asking that, that, that use of this building was for light industrial.
But we can't be just general. That's what, that's what. Word indicated, this, the use before it. The word indicated, the use before, the use before it was the use that's testified to.
Correct.
And now, okay, well, then that, that's the, that's the use, and that's the use.
They never stop.
Resolution in favor of. It did not, it did not expand that definition. And you can't just, you can't just say white industrial, whatever that may be, I, I, I didn't put you on the law on that one.
Okay, I, I am, I am, I am relying on the, on the, on the language of the, of the resolution. That's, it's not something that came to me in the night.
But the, but the, but the late use application is for the use before the board. It is not the use or something else.
It's not a category.
Well.
You don't get a use reference for a category.
Mike, what's a fulfillment, a fulfillment center warehouse, distribution center?
Well, we, we haven't gotten to that yet, but I'm not.
Yeah, that's not right, that's in front of us. No, you're saying that's not in front of us now, even though they love to write a testimony telling us what's coming, that's not in front of us.
Right, you just had testimony that says for fifty, forty-eight years.
Right, he had, he had, he had a manufacturing.
Right, and, and, and when the board, and when the board determined that in nineteen eighty, that was the use they determined, they did not expand parameters or the, or the.
I, I don't think we have to say, what, a metal stamping or whatever, I, I think this is a, this was a light made by other use. I, I don't, I don't.
It was a specific use, not a general category use.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Every, every certificate of continuing non-conform use that's come before this, what's in session here, is, I've done McDonald's, I'm going out of business.
Years, that's what.
Target is moving in, change the, uh, facade, change the oil, let's rock and roll. We've had some that were used car lot, this used car lot went out, this new, new used car lot came in, or used car, this business came in. It's usually been a similar business. So, but, but, but it is not that they took anything from their schedule B or schedule A, and said, okay, the dump field, the I-one, R-two zone, these are the things were allowed. That business pre, uh, it was a pre-existing business before our zoning ordinance.
Right, I understand.
And it continued, but in every iteration of our planning, or master plan, or zoning ordinances, they still maintain that area as a R-two residential zone. They let that stay there because it was there, hoping that in some time, then it will just go away.
That's exactly the process that the court, that the courts lay out, um, and, and that the statute lays out. So here we have, that, we have a, a pre-existing, I, I say light industrial, which is called manufacturing, use, but at this site that, uh, the law is entitled to continue unless it's, unless it's been abandoned. Um, but I, I don't think, I don't think that, identify down to the, down to the, you know, the size of the, of the raw materials that, that were used, and I think it's a, it's a.
On the contrary, if you look at the extracted industries cases, it does deal with the, you know, the exact amount being moved or removed. You know, the quarry cases.
Check them out. Intensity, I agree, but, but to say that, that we're requesting a certificate of, of non-conform use for a.
But the use is not, but the use is not continuing, the use is changing. The use is changing, it, it, it's, it's that simple. You're not gonna tell me that a, I'm sorry, I don't know where this one would. It, it's very hard for anyone to say that a, uh, you know, a, a manufacturing use, a manufacturing use to make semiconductor materials, sorry, I'm not that conversant with high technology.
Okay, let's use that term.
And, um, i- is identical or can be identical to what is essentially the storage of main products.
No, and I'm not trying to draw that.
Widget, widgets, as we used to call it in law.
I'm not trying to draw that analogy, I'm saying, let's say it was a public manufacturing, let's say it was a skateboard manufacturing. Uh, I mean, are, are you saying that certificate of non-conform only applies if we come in with someone who makes exactly what, what, um, Mr. Dillon, Dr. Dillon's company made?
I would take that position, yes, or, 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 or very nearly identical there too.
And that's the substantially similar.
Right.
Case, a argument that has to be made.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the certificate of non-conform use is for specific use, not a category. It's not for light manufacturing, it's not for light industrial, it's for metal etching, that is what you're asking. That's the use.
And, 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 but what you're saying will be coming before the board with is obviously something that has nothing to do with manufacturing.
Well, not necessarily. If we find a manufacturer, and we each did demonstrate that it's substantially similar, and bumble down this close.
Yeah, but if you were gonna go back to a manufacturing, you usually have to come back to the board again.
Did you, did you, did your client sign a contract with the, the packaging company?
Yes.
Why were you afraid to come in front of the board to ask for a variance for that use? Why are we going through this, we spent hours and hours, and I'm spinning around in my chair?
I wouldn't call it fear, I would call it, I would call it, uh, intention of giving up a property right that they have, which is, which is the, the, the pre-existing non-conform use, which, which is a property right, which we're trying to have recognized by this board, if it turns out that we, we, that the determination is that we need a D-one variance, and we have to be back before you. That's what we, that's what we would do, but at least at that point, we'll have, we'll, yes.
Okay, in other words, you want to preserve, you want to preserve that manufacturing use in case you, you get a future, I don't know, Acme Widget Company comes in and you want a manufacturing widget. You want to be able to preserve that, that level of use as you go forward as, as a landlord. We should set that down eight, eight months ago.
Well, it didn't, this, this.
I mean, I'm not trying to.
Absolutely fantastic person, we won't go on this, he's been, he's been a lot of brain damage and a lot of thinking through, and, and that, that has not, that's not something that eight months ago.
It says here that, right now, there's a lease agreement signed January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two, which was renics.
It could be, it could be terminated.
So you're not proposing anything right now?
Now, I'm proposing certificate of non-conform, I'm not, I, I don't, I don't know. That we'll proceed with them because everything, I, I know what I have to demonstrate, I have to demonstrate substantial similarity, I have to demonstrate it's not an expansion, I have, I have an issue with the amount of traffic, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of all this, because I'm, I'm trying to, uh, I, I didn't know all that either.
Let, let, let me ask the next question. Yeah.
Please.
Won't you? Sorry.
Please.
Okay, and so, so what, what you, what you, what you propose to do is, uh, it's all going wrong. Terminate, terminate this existing lease with you've introduced.
Possibly.
And seek with, you know, seek to the best extent possible to re-let the property for manufacturing.
Possibly, if not, we would, if we can't, if we don't succeed in that, we would need to come in and ask for a variance.
We can't get into.
I don't think so, sorry, I, I, again, I'm not trying to. I don't think so, I think we're, we're, even if we had now spoken to one, spoken to one tenant, we're entitled to apply for a certificate of non-conform use, and that's what we're doing. And so, I, I think we can put that box around it.
After you have a tenant's law.
It's not necessary, Jerry. It's not the law.
So let me, let me get this straight. This, this. Is that your contract right now?
That, that's an, that's existing.
That's existing.
But we have, but we appreciate that they don't have the right to occupy space. Because we don't have their approvals.
No.
Right, and, and they, the first one got tired of waiting, and they may get tired of waiting, so.
That's, that's irrelevant, the, the contract you have with this company is irrelevant to what you presented to us.
That's correct.
It's irrelevant.
Only, only as a demonstration.
All the questions we're gonna get from the audience, most of them, forgive me, are gonna be irrelevant to the case you presented.
I, 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 I don't know what they're gonna say with that, maybe the case.
Well, you should know what they're gonna say.
I do know what they're gonna say, they want to talk about what's gonna be there.
Of course.
And right, so we're not, tonight, tonight, we just wanna, we just wanna draw the line where we, we are entitled to certificate of non-conform use. We presented our case, no, pre-existing non-conform use, not abandoned, not destroyed, they were entitled.
Okay, um, the parameters of the pre-existing non-conform use, if the board, and again, I, I, no implication whatsoever. The parameters of the pre-existing non-conform use, those as set forth by the witness, the gentleman sitting in front of me who testified as to what went on and what they were doing, those would be the specific parameters, you understand that if you get a certificate, in the board's, in the, in the board's judgment, you are entitled to a certificate. That is what the certificate is for. You, you're not gonna come in again and say, well, you know, we're not doing this, but we're doing that. We've talked throughout this, and you know this as well as I do, the, the lack of specificity in what has to take place has been a big problem. It's a big problem for Mr. Muselli, a big problem for me, it's a big problem for, for Mr. Cole. And we're in a position where we have to, you know, we have to protect the board from that kind of stuff. So, uh, you know, what would it be? I mean, I don't want, you know, you, you, you would, you would be, you know, in essence, you're not gonna come back in for an interpretation of a certificate of non-conform use.
Well, I can say that I, I believe that we should, we should agree on what that use should be, I don't believe it should be down to the, you know, funny words describing exactly what he did, I think that can be described in more literal fashion.
I think it has to be, I, 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 I don't.
It's, it's.
I, I, I mean, I think, you know, you wanna, I think you're making.
Well, McDonald's is a burger king, the McDonald's is not burger king. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, is to make it the same type, not, but not the identical, not the identical processes that.
As close as possible.
That, that, that the, you know, I mean, he, he has patented processes, we can't say it's gotta be that.
But that's for certain, for us, the testimony, that is what the application is prior, that's what you're asking for, not something that wasn't done, what was done.
Right, but what, but we know, we can say what, we can describe what was done in many levels of detail, I don't think it's, I don't think it's equitable for me to say it has to be the exact industrial processes. I, I can see it, light industrial is strong.
Light industrial is far too far.
This is just an issue that you asked.
What was, what was, so what the board, and what the board approved in nineteen eighty, I mean, I was still in college then. But I remember, no, no, I, I, listen, I had the benefit of having, uh, the benefit of years later, working for someone who had a lot to do with this kind of work. I can remember, I know Mr. Cox discussed it, like, uh, you know, the use that's, the use that's approved, just the use that's in record. And then, you know, with its detail, whatever the pocket marks are, you know, or whatever, the noise it presents, even the activity that takes place, that's the use. It's not something, something to implicate or to print or distort, I, I don't want, it's negative distortion.
So, Mr., uh, Dr. Dillon, uh, described the use as manufacturing parts for the, for the microelectronics.
What his testimony indicates on the record, we have, we have recorded.
Right, 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 but I, I guess, and we could ask him again, that to me, that to me is something that's. He came up, then, part, man, microelectronics parts manufacturing, or electronics part manufacturing, that is detailed enough without getting into the specific industrial processes that went on at town, town technologies.
Yeah, but also, also intensified too, he had, he worked at four thirty, he had twenty employees.
Yeah.
He had a little bit of trucks, that's what these people have been living with.
Right, right, but that's, that, that was, that's not, but that's not, that's not a non-conform use, I'm really just talking about.
Just saying that, that's only for, that is, that is part of the, that is part of the, I don't know how it's not, intensive use actually is more in record.
A specific of non-conform use would indicate the hours of operation of the.
Absolutely.
It would indicate the intensity and the, and, and, yeah, every aspect of the use, I, I don't. I mean, I, quite candidly, I mean, like you, I've read the, you, you and I would maybe read the law a little differently, uh, maybe directly differently, but the use, the use is in fact what it is in all its glory. Not, it's not what it might be. Not what we can make it into.
No, but there was, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing inherent in this use that requires it to operate in those hours. Any, any use that comes here needs to operate within the scope of.
Well, how do you know? Well, how do you know we didn't testify in 1980 that that was what they would do or the board may, may impose that upon them?
Well, it's not one of your ask for a variance. We have the right to limit whatever you want to leave. It's not an answer for a variance. I, I do not know right now. We're just talking about a use and, and.
No, a specific use is based on a testimony given by a doctor. A specific, it's not a category, all the hours.
As in the fact of activity of the property.
Right, sort of. And I disagree. I don't think this title is on board 24/7 because it's a non-conforming use. Certificate's based on exactly what Dr. Dillon said.
Can I just pop my mic for that?
I think they should actually.
It's narrow.
Narrow. So they narrowed the road. No, but it had no, it had no sidewalks. It had no, it had no long curbs. Don't want those layered secret that were designed to be in and made it, because it was going to go to that. They narrowed it. They narrowed it by, um, thirty feet.
Obviously, you failed me to submit another application regardless of. Capitalist technology starts, we're back in the business tomorrow, which I think will have another, another thing to make, to demonstrate. To, to maybe what's at this pole. Nonetheless, we, we do believe we are entitled to certificate of non-employment based on the testimony that was given. No abandonment, um, no obstruction and the fact that the word down in 1980, that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, I believe satisfies those requirements. So, um, I believe that, that the use should be limited, should, should, should be slightly broader than, than, um, the specific exact use that he testified to. But I know you all will, you all will, you know, take, take your vote. Um, and, you know, I, I hope you, I hope you concur. We, we don't believe that the tenant, that, that, um, Renex is a great tenant for this site. Knowing what we know about, about the, um, truck traffic and so forth. And so we're going to revisit that and go back to a broker and see what, what to do. We want to use this building and we don't want to abandon it. So I think that's, hopefully we're, we're happy with it.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? You want to identify yourself and give your address.
Uh, David Lang.
Agent comments as opposed to questions. I'm sorry for interrupting you. Sorry.
Um, I, I did have a question. I, what I don't understand is, does the granting of this include uh, the continuation of, let's say if there had to be DEP mitigation, then they could continue to do that. That would generate more of what would consider to be DEP hazards. That's what I understand. So if you're continuing to do whatever was done here and they had to perform mitigation in order to make it for the next tenant, would the next tenant be able to come through with this approval and contaminate again?
Is the LSRT still in action?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's a conclusion.
We, we, we're in the middle of our, of our deep rounds of testing right now.
So the LSRT is something the state gives and that will be continuous no matter what goes on. That's, once it's in action, they'll continue to clean up and that's regulated by the DEP. And here's your, who's the engineering firm managing the LSRT?
ELS.
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 Now there's an engineering firm who sees that. It's a conclusion.
So once they say that's continued to be there, make your safe, can the next person come in and use the place? Not without getting in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I have. I have two comments. Yes, I will. I'm Barbara Agans. I live at Nine Bell Avenue, directly across the street from that building. Uh, I have lived there for 54 years. So I have seen town labs, town technology. In fact, even red fern lace in that building. Giving you my own history and then. But what I want to present actually is the fact that Bell Avenue itself is a very narrow street. There's resident parking on both sides of the street. Street is 28 feet, two inches wide. It was measured today.
That explains.
That explains.
Yeah, it's, well, it was measured in three different, we measured it in three different places.
We're making a record.
But. The residents of Bell Avenue and the surrounding areas have an easement to park in the parking lot under unusual circumstances such as snowstorms, gatherings within the, the street, uh, times when cars have been ordered to be off the street so they can be cleaned or whatever. This easement has been going on since Bell Avenue was, uh, put in for the use of that building. Past fif, more than 50 years, there has never been, it's never been challenged by any order, owner of the building. Therefore, it is a common law, right? So that easement must remain. Uh, just.
Go right ahead, ma'am. I, I can't, I can't, I can't give a legal opinion on that. I want you to testify.
And my other is a comment that right now there is a somewhat of a dangerous situation in the parking lot of the building. There are eight to 10, sometimes 12 trucks belonging to a company called Summitville Tree Services. And they are tree landscapers or, or whatever, but will frequently bring back to the parking lot stuff that they have trimmed from trees and stuff, and then they run it through the chopper to go in the parking lot, making quite a bit of noise. And there are some young children on the street. There's a six months old baby that lives directly across the street from all this noise that is disturbing to the street.
Have you, I, i, if you've been concerned about the noise, have you contacted the authorities?
I, I have not, but I believe one of the residents in the, uh, one of the rental partners has.
Just a question.
But I, I'm just concerned that, you know, this is definitely a non-compliant use.
Is that it? Yes, sir.
Route 43 North Millestree. Um, we've come here twice already for this. And, uh, Mr. Cole put together a nice report here about a supposed use. And now we find out it's basically useless. I'm just kind of appalled that we had to go through all this. This man has to use his time to make a report on something that really wasn't even in the, in the plan. So that's just my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
George, 21 Bell Avenue. Uh, just a quick comment. Obviously, uh, what she had just spoken about, she was actually going to represent a large group of us. We had met about two hours last night and the reason she kind of short is because it's kind of threw us knowing that the, uh, use may change. So our concern is kind of null employee. I actually had a fairly long presentation. So no more will be back.
If you have other comments, certainly you're welcome to, to.
No, at this point it might be irrelevant. So why waste your time?
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Sir?
Harold Ward, 41 North Mid Door Street. Uh, it's just, I understand that this is going to be, I, I've lived there for like 16, 17 years. I've, uh, known Mr. Dillon for a long time because I've always took him Christmas cards and everything. Uh, there's never really been any, no more than like, maybe like, I would say seven cars in the parking lot there usually. I would go down there and, uh, I would park my car there whenever, anytime that I would have to leave uh, my lock for the cleaning or snow or whatever. And there was never any more than like several cars there. I would go in, give him a Christmas card because that's what I do. And there would probably be anybody in there. And, uh, it was always Saturdays, Saturdays and Sundays. It was always very quiet in the woods. My, my concern is this. Uh, we have a community here. We, we, these are all my community friends. We don't want something to be railroaded down our throats. Okay? And something that's going to be changing up some kind of distribution center, other disguises or some kind of like, uh, part, uh, computer chip technology, whatever. And having trucks coming in all hours of the day and on weekends delivering, I think you got stuff for boxes or whatever. Somebody said some about storage boxes or whatever. And like, uh, Amazon or Walmart type of distribution type of service. So that's why we are here and that's why we are concerned. We are the concerned citizens of this neighborhood. We want to keep our community as a residential community and a community of concerned citizens and friends. We don't want something coming in here, railroaded in throughout the neighborhood and disturbing our tranquility and our property values.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anyone else? Come on? Yeah. Someone like to move the closed apartment portion?
On the second.
Move the second.
Part of the observation.
Yeah. Yeah. One second, one second.
Hi.
Close. Yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, referring to, referring to the, um, the 1980 resolution, um, the board made follow-up mine. Use is light industrial use. Use long predates zoning ordinance. It's a valid non-conformal use. Use present in existence. This document, I submit, satisfies the advocates for demonstrating that the use of this property uh, by handle of authorities was a, um, vaguely pre-existing non-conforming use. Since the board determined that in 1980, there's no need to reestablish, re-establish that today. Uh, and, and I think, I, I don't believe there's anyone's taking a position on that. Well, we then have demonstrated that since 1980, use has not been abandoned. And that takes us to Dr. Dillon's testimony and Mr. Alexander's testimony, which I submit establishes that the use has not been abandoned as client under law, which includes an intent to abandon. Um, there was continued use as well as continued efforts to position the property, uh, to, to continue the light industrial use. Um, building has not been destroyed. You heard that testimony. Those are the proofs. They're limited. They need to be made in order to receive a certificate of non-employment announced or order of listing, that you vote to approve that.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I, I wrote on the beginning, and I know I was speaking pretty aggressively there, but I, I think the board understands what it, what it needs to determine. Um, and, uh, I mean, I, I, I don't think it'll be, the board, the board has to make this decision. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to find what I think that decision should be. Um, but I believe under the circumstances, you have, uh, you know, the evidence before you certainly permit you, uh, reach, reach an informed decision, whatever that may be. Would someone like to move for the approval of a certificate of non-employment?
Oh, that's discussion.
Okay. Oh, let's have a motion.
Probably for a discussion.
Okay. Move the second. What would you like? Ed?
Oh, you know, going back to 1984, council did state two things in the board finding, but there's more to that statement that he did not say. Use is light industrial use and the testimony indicates that there will be no excess of noise, light, traffic, dirt or other annoyances that other than presently exist. That's speaking to what's going on.
That was for heat extension. That was talking about it, right?
Um, second part of that is use long predates zoning ordinance. Obviously, when the lace company was there, zoning ordinance existed back there. That's, that's there. Um, yeah. And it's a valid non-conforming use that was found. In fact, present, we're talking about exactly what's being done there. Manufacturing use is less, maybe the word obnoxious, than the formal use of this property. So what, what Dr. Del Han was doing was less obnoxious than what the lace people were doing. But they're speaking specifically about what they were doing. I think that this year died, or I'll say retired, Dr. Retired.
I totally agree. In fact, the new owner, the applicant, actually had a contract for a different use. I forget what it was. But it certainly wasn't, um, the kind of use, uh, that Dr. Dillon was using. So, uh, I think basically he abandoned it when he signed the contract for a different use. So I, I agree with that.
I agree with Dan.
I question that, whether Dr. Del Han would be some abandoned private use to take it out of there.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I believe it evidences an intention.
Okay.
To change. Um, you know, there, there is case law where, you know, continuing activity takes place, for example, shoring the building, you know, but not changing anything in it. You know, if you sign the lease, in my opinion, you're evidencing an intent to use the, you know, use the property for a different purpose.
Does it have a legal basis for that?
I believe there, I, I, I believe there is, yes.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I'm asking. In that case, I concur.
All right.
Okay. Now, Mr. Leebling, you started, you said that you wanted to be a good neighbor. I submit that your performance this evening is not very neighborly. I think that if you wanted to be a good neighbor, we wouldn't have gone through this, what I see as a shell game. We went from being a manufacturer to light industrial, to you have a lease with somebody who you think you're going to break the lease with because they're not going to be a very good tenant, to maybe it's a daycare center.
That, that was.
Well, I, well, it wasn't funny. You have a group of people here who want to know what's going to be happening in their neighborhood. And the bottom line is, this is zone R2. This is zone residential. I would suggest perhaps your client think about that a little bit and perhaps try to conform to the zoning as it is now. I, 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 I think this was a circus tonight. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I think what was proven beyond unreasonable doubt is why it should be an R2. No, I, I, I think what was proven beyond unreasonable doubt is why it should be an R two. If Mr. Bayet is seeing something out of his back window that looks suspicious, and we don't know if permits were gathered, and all this weird stuff, it proves to me why it shouldn't be residential, and why it's so important that we're here to make sure. There are these people who live here and dealing with things, and, and like Reverend said, I, I was confused the whole time. I'm looking at, I thought we're coming here approving the use, and then we're not. And then we don't have a lease, and then we do. Well, maybe we'll, we'll, well, maybe we'll cancel that, we, I don't know, I just, uh, I feel like, yeah, I just feel like I was thrown. And, uh, that's how I feel about it. I just, like I said, I feel it was proven, uh, why it should be an R two, because residents live there, and this is gonna be a big problem going forward.
I was, I was confused, uh, a little bit about the presentation as well, uh, because I thought the same thing. We were coming here to decide on, uh, a, a proposed use, um, and the, the change kind of threw me. I think that as far as the, the use goes, I, I don't understand, I didn't get a full comprehension of what the applicant was, wants us to do. And I don't know how we could craft the, the, craft something around that. That's really all I, I can say.
I said before, this is, it, the building and the businesses predated zoning ordinance, that, I think they predated the town name, Corvus. And all through that time, every iteration or master plan in zoning ordinance always called that area the R two. They could have taken the position to spot zone industrial, they would have to be before us. But, I mean, like I said, you probably looked at schedule A, schedule B, what's, what's allowed in the industrial zones, in some cases, we'll go for. Any communication or any action by the board, or the boards, was based strictly on what was already there. I think, as I said before, this certificate of continuing non-conformity would go with, I got a Burger King, I'm eating, McDonald's is moving in, change the grease, change the color, and walk along. This is not that. We don't know what's going on here. Even though it's in, in the schedule B, it's light industrial, it's not what was there. So you can't continue a use by doing something else. You can't play football and then say I'm gonna bring it up to the baseball team. So, board, we have a motion, and we have a second.
This is for discussion?
Would someone like to move the application?
Yeah, I'll move the application.
Okay. Would someone like the second?
Wait a minute, you're moving the application through direction of the voter.
To the voter.
I'm second.
So you're moving the second. I guess what would be to allow for the, to get breath to significant non-conformity. Hello, what was that? That, which called the office.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yep.
Mr. Lockland?
No.
Mr. Dymasky?
No.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Ms. Carpeness?
No.
Mr. O'Neill?
No.
Mr. Riches?
Mr. Riches, I'm sorry.
Chairman Adair?
No.
Motion there in the, uh, the, uh. None in favor?
Seven, seven opposed.
Would someone like to move, uh, a gentleman?
Somebody.
Second, second.
Out of here.
That's why we all stick together. That's why we all are together.
We'll be back.
Yeah. I really hope, I'm really sorry if y'all felt jerked around. After the last meeting, we knew that this, that this tenant.
Oh, we're still on TV. Whoa, tell me this.